Can you all give a round of applause to Janay Prince, who is with us today? Amazing. We color coordinated, right? This is great. We made sure we were on the same page there. First of all, thank you for being here. I know you haven't been on the job that long, but you were like, okay, I'm here. I'm ready to make sure I have these public conversations. And grateful that you're taking a shot with us here to be able to have this conversation. I wanted to start off with the same question that we have asked all 150 people we have had go through this, which is, why are you doing this? Where does this come from for you? Where does public service? Why is that important to you?
Wow. Gosh. Well, I've always been interested in city planning.
Okay.
When I was little, I mean, little, little, that little, I used to beg my grandfather to take me out to look at bridges and tall buildings.
Okay.
So I've always been interested in cities and city planning. I've worked as a consultant in the private sector. I've worked in the public sector. Every time I go to the private sector, my heart calls me back to public service. I don't know why.
Where'd you grow up?
I was born in Detroit.
Okay.
So that was the Ambassador Bridge that we were going to look at.
Okay. That's what I was gonna ask.
And I went to high school and college in Ohio. Yes, I'm a Buckeye. You can boo now.
That's right, you are in Georgia territory. So you grew up in Detroit. Tell me a little bit about your parents. Tell me about your upbringing. Were you closer to your mom, your dad, both? I've read a little bit about your journey, but would love to hear it from you.
Okay. So my mom and dad, they both worked for General Motors.
Okay.
And my dad did supply chain for them, and so did my mom. So they were in the same department, but he wasn't her boss somehow. You know, big department, whatever. My dad's job was to get parts to the plant on time. And, you know, I remember that it was the beginning of the whole just-in-time delivery system. And that's very hard to do. And I can remember being like middle school, high school, and, you know, the phone ringing in the middle of the night. And it was railroads or a trucking company because a certain shipment wasn't going to arrive. And, you know, my dad having to go charter a plane to make sure that certain parts got to the plant. So that's very similar to transportation planning, which is kind of where I started at ARC,
Yeah.
in the transportation planning division. Now, my mom, she was always very political, very much an activist. She was the president of the Dayton, Ohio, chapter of the National Organization for Women. She worked on a lot of legislation in Ohio. Very, very politically active, always working on campaigns.
Yeah.
I always thought that was just so embarrassing. You know? But I think I got a little bit of something from both of them.
Yeah.
So when I was in college, GM'd the S-10 truck plant. Does anybody remember those little S-10 trucks? Oh, sorry, it's raised in their head. You had one? Yeah, okay. I've worked two summers on the assembly line, building those S-10 trucks. So if you had one from certain years, I apologize.
No recalls, no recalls. So what about your, it sounds like you were also close to your grandfather, who would take you to see these buildings and bridges.
He was a pastor of a church
Okay.
and an Italian immigrant.
Okay.
And, you know, he would take me wherever I wanted to go. Okay, let's go look at the bridge.
Did he spoil you a lot? Was that the...
He always said that I was going to be an engineer or an architect. Pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty spot on. What, for you, your mom being an activist and organizer, is that something that, you said, you know, that, you know, of course, every kid, anything their parents do can start to feel a little embarrassing. But for you, in the time where your mom was organizing, particularly for women, how do you think that that shaped kind of your view on activists, activism and organizing? Was that something you would be like, Mom, you go do that, I'm staying here? Or were you, did you participate as well? Did she let you participate? What was the...
I was expected to participate.
You were expected to participate?
So, you know, I can remember coming downstairs and the house is full of people and they're, you know, stuffing envelopes and, you know, stuff like that. Or going to a place where a business who would allow us to use their phones to do calls in the evening, stuff like that. You know, just usually around the kitchen table with the leadership from now. And, you know, my dad coming in and going, does anybody want anything to eat? Does anyone want anything to drink? Okay, ladies, have a good time. I'm gonna go watch football game.
Yeah. Is that... What do you think about, when you think about organizers and activists today, who, you know, there's a variety of different opinions on, you know, what their tactics might be, how they might approach their work? What do you think, was there anything you saw behind the scenes of being, you know, the daughter of someone who was doing organizing work that people don't really see about activism and organizing that might inform the way you think about activism today?
Well, I think that the people who do this are generally very well-informed. They've done their research. They know what they're talking about. And they're very well-organized. And they're not as, they're just regular, nice people like everybody else. They may be, you know, very strong-minded on a particular topic. But that works. I mean, there are a handful of former elected officials from Ohio that can thank my mother for them getting elected.
Yeah. Is that something that, when you think about activism and organizing that's happening in Atlanta, why do you think that there is that kind of dehumanization of activists and organizers in a way, right? There's like a, sure, there are people activating, they're organizing, but so often it feels like they're ignored or doors are closed on them. They're often pressing. And does that, why do you think that happens? What is it that...
I don't see that at all, at least not at my level.
Okay.
Right? So, you know, anybody wants to come talk to me, I'll talk to them. I'm not saying, no, 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 I'm not gonna talk to someone, so, you know, I mean...
But you do see in political organizing, it's very difficult for a number of people who are trying to press on something, to try to get time, well, there is a gap between decision-makers, maybe not with you, but with decision-makers and folks who are trying to organize for something to change. Where do you think that gap is? Why does that exist? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I, you know, I'm a staff person, right? So I'm the one that's doing the day-to-day work. And I think that there is some frustration from people who are activists when they find out that so much of my day-to-day work is budget and spreadsheets and management and meetings. And I'm not entirely focused on their particular interest. And I think that can be frustrating.
Yeah.
But the job is, you know, just, it's this big.
Yeah.
You know, and that person's particular interest is just part of that.
Got it. I'll come back to that. So, wanna go back to Ohio State. What brought you to, were you like, I'm definitely going to be a Buckeye? Was that in the family? Was it in the cereal? What was the...
It was definitely not in the family.
Okay, because you're in Michigan, right?
Right, exactly. So when we moved to Ohio, and I was starting to think about where to go to college, my dad said, you know, you can go to any state school in Ohio that you want, and I will pay the tuition.
Yeah.
If you go outside of Ohio, I will give you the amount of the tuition.
Okay.
You have to pay for your own room and board and everything else, but I will pay your tuition.
Yeah.
And that's what he did. But a lot of my extended family members went to University of Michigan.
Uh-huh.
And several of them played football there.
Okay.
Right? And my Uncle Tommy was an assistant athletic director there. And so, you know, it was like, I remember it being Christmas time. A junior of high school and we're unwrapping presents at my aunt's house. And somebody says, Janay, have you decided where you want to go to college? And I said, I think I'm gonna go to Ohio State. And they all started yelling, boo, and throwing the wrapping paper at me.
Nice. So that, it wasn't popular in the Michigan household to go to...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Did you love it there?
I did. Well, I was there for seven years, so, yeah.
Did you, what was, what would your friends in college describe Janay as? What would they say Janay was, what?
Janay always knew she wanted to be a city planner.
Really? From day one, since you got into college? Was there a class or a teacher or someone else? Or was it just your grandfather telling you that you're gonna be an architect?
So when I was in high school, I went to one of those high schools where most of the kids go to college.
Yeah.
And I had a meeting with a guidance counselor who said, you know, well, what do you want to major in? And I said, I want to be an architect. And he said, honey, you are not good enough at math to be an architect. And you should do something related. I think you should be an interior decorator.
You know, when someone starts the sentence with honey, that everything that comes after, it's gonna be disastrous.
Yes. Particularly when you're not in the South.
Yeah.
Right?
Got it. Understood.
And at that time, being 16 years old and he was a grown-up in a position of authority, I thought, oh, gosh, okay, well, I don't think I want to be an interior decorator. What else can I do? What is related to architecture? So we had this career library, and I just started reading everything I could. And I read about city planning, and I thought, wow, that sounds really interesting.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe I should do that. So the next time I met with him, I told him I was gonna be a city planner, and he had never heard of that, so he couldn't dissuade me.
Got it. So did you, what did you study while you were at Ohio State?
So I really first thought I wanted to go to University of Cincinnati.
Okay.
Because they have a really great program where, this is back when they were on, I think they're still on quarters, but back then what they did was, you took classes for two quarters and you had some sort of internship the other two quarters. So it would take five years to get a four-year degree, but you would leave college with all this experience. But several young women were raped on the UC campus when I was in high school. And my father said, I won't pay your tuition to go to University of Cincinnati. So I looked up who else had a city planning program.
Yeah.
Ohio State did.
Nice.
But they didn't have an undergraduate degree in city planning. They had a graduate degree program. So I went there and I took as many classes in city planning as possible when I was an undergraduate. And the department director said to me, well, you can get a minor in city planning and then come back here and go to graduate school. Come back, get your master's. And he said, just major in something that you think is interesting.
Okay.
Okay. So I majored in sociology, particularly in urban sociology, reading all of those studies about how the built environment impacts the way that people live.
Yeah.
Their day-to-day lives. A lot of like case studies, Herbert Gans, where they live in the community for a long time and describe all of that. I thought it was really interesting. So, you know, there was my major, my undergraduate, and then my minor was in city planning. And then I did go ahead and go to graduate school for my master's in city planning.
Knocked it out while you were there, yeah.
I was there for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's awesome. What was the, what was the first gig you landed out of college? Like, was it in city pla, or, excuse me, out of your graduate degree? Was it in city planning? Or did you, was it challenging for you to find a job in city planning?
No, not really, because my last internship was with the City of Springfield, Ohio.
Okay.
Working in the city planning department. And, you know, I learned a lot of stuff. So back then, there used to be a publication called The Job Mart that the American Planning Association put out.
Okay.
And I applied to every single entry-level position. Starting three months before I graduated, I just sent resumes everywhere, blanketed the country.
Yeah, nice. And you landed in, where'd you land after that?
So my first job was with the City of Maitland, Florida, which is a suburb of Orlando.
Okay, gotcha. Was that, was that in your top five picks as a potential city planner? You wanted to be, go to the South? Was that, how did people, particularly when you were studying city plan, how did they describe planning in the South versus anywhere else? Was it different? Or was it just kind of one blanket way of thinking about planning across the country?
Well, I don't know if this is still true, but at the time, there were five states in the US that required city planning.
Got it.
Georgia, Florida, Washington, Oregon, and California.
Okay.
So I was hoping to end up in one of those places.
Got you.
And I did.
Okay, nice. What'd you think of Florida? How was that? Florida's an interesting place to talk about, especially right now.
Yeah, yeah. You know, but they say, they tell me, we pay you in sunshine.
Oh, pay you in sunshine, nice. Was it, was it a culture shock for you at all, moving from Michigan to Ohio to Florida? Was that a change for you?
No, not really.
Didn't feel like a change?
You know, I mean, Central Florida is sort of like culturally, to me, like the South or the Midwest in a lot of ways. So many transplants.
Yeah. So you were, and how long were you in Florida for?
Just a year.
Okay, just a year. Then where'd you go after that?
Missouri.
Missouri, okay. I feel like you were playing one of those games where you gotta get a quarter from every state. You were hopping so much from, so you went from Florida to Missouri. What brought you to Missouri?
Well, I left my job in Florida
Okay.
for a romantic misadventure.
Okay. We've all been there.
All right, well, nobody's been as misadventurous as me because I moved to Finland with the guy.
Oh.
I did.
Has anyone else moved to another country for someone else? Here?
See, there you go.
Okay, great. All right, well, you win. That's great, yeah, yeah.
So when coming back to the US, it was another one of these blanket-the-country-in-resumes situations. And I ended up in St. Charles, Missouri.
Okay.
Which is, for all your history buffs, the first stop on Lewis and Clark's expedition up the Missouri River.
Okay.
And it was a really neat place to work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before I get to how you got to Atlanta, can you give me a little bit about, is there, like, I wanna know about your name. I have not seen Janay spelled this way. I have not seen it. I think everyone who has walked in was like, I wanna make sure I pronounce this right. So what's the origin of your name?
Like Renee, but with a J.
Yeah.
And...
Is there a family member that was also named Janay? Or was it someone's, where'd that name come from? What's the origin of the name?
My parents were hippies.
Okay, nice.
Okay, I grew up with bands practicing in the basement.
Got it, okay.
And I'm not gonna say anything else.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it, got it. Understood. Do you have siblings?
I do have a younger sister.
Okay, what's her name?
Jamie.
Jamie, okay. Well, that's less adventurous. That's amazing. So you, so you go from, you go from Michigan to Ohio to Florida. We make a quick trip to Finland real quick. Would you have stayed there? Did you like Finland?
Finland is a wonderful place to visit.
Okay. Great. You are amazing at one-liners. So we went from Finland, and then we got to Missouri. Where does, where does Georgia come into this? How many more, it's next.
Next.
So you go from Missouri to Georgia. Why was Georgia on your mind?
When I was graduating from college, it seemed like everybody was moving to Atlanta or to Chicago.
Okay.
And I had four friends from college who lived here. And I used to come here and visit all the time.
For Freak Nick, right?
About that timeframe.
Yeah, 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 I got it, yeah. Me too.
I, one time, my best friend was driving me back to the airport to go back to St. Louis. And I just started crying in the car. I don't wanna go back there. I don't wanna go back. I loved my job, I just didn't really like living there.
Yeah.
And she said to me, you know, you could move here. Oh, like Bob.
Yep. Okay. And so you did it? You just did it?
Well, I did. So my best friend, this is kind of a convoluted story, worked with a guy
Okay.
whose girlfriend worked at the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Okay, nice.
And sent my resume, had an interview, ta-da, I'm here.
Amazing. What did you know about, I feel like the Atlanta Regional Commission, when I've traveled with folks to other cities, we talk about the regional commission. It's like a very weird entity relative to like what other places have, what their regional commissions are responsible for. It has a much larger scope of responsibility than many other major metropolitan areas. What drew you to the ARC? And what was your role there? And was it, did you find it to be focused on planning? Or was it, did it have a lot going on then as well?
Well, I thought it would be a good sort of gateway to working in the Atlanta region because then I would get to meet everybody, get to know everybody, get to know all the various jurisdictions and cities and counties and who's who and what's what.
Yeah.
And so I was willing to take pretty much whatever job they offered to me.
Okay.
And my background before that, I had done land use planning, comp plans, some environmental planning work. And they brought me into the transportation planning division.
Okay.
They wanted to have more different types of experience within the group. And I was working in this group that was called Commute Options. I don't think it's still called that. But it was ahead of its time in that it was trying to figure out how to get employers to let their employees work from other locations.
Ah, interesting. Wow. Foresight, yeah.
I did that. I did a lot of the community outreach work.
Okay.
The public involvement stuff for the Transportation Improvement Plan and the Regional Transportation Plan. And I was assigned three counties, Henry, Fayette, and Clayton Counties
Okay.
to work with. I did the Fayette County Transportation Plan. And that's how I met everybody down there.
Okay.
And then I went to work for the City of Fayetteville, so...
Okay. Where, where did you live when you moved back to Georgia? Where was home first?
So my first apartment was in Vinings.
Okay, nice.
And then I bought a house in Brookhaven
Okay.
from a guy in a motorcycle gang.
Nice, nice.
And that was back when Mom and Pops, the little store there on Dresden, had bars on the windows. And if you slipped them 20 bucks, you could go around back and get beer on Sundays.
Oh, wow, nice.
That was a long time ago.
Now you just have to do that with the state legislature. So it's great, yeah, it's perfect. What, so you, you, do you still stay in Brookhaven? Are you still there?
No, no.
Okay.
I live in...
So you're an NPO?
Yeah, I live in Eastlake.
That's right, okay, got it. So you went to Fayetteville. How long were you in Fayetteville for?
Well, I've worked there three times. So I just kept going back, couldn't stay away.
It is the city of dreams.
When I first started there, you know, it was really small. It was 7,000 people.
Okay.
And I was the city planner. Learned a lot, right? And it was growing so fast, you know, there really was a lot to, a lot to do there. And I think it's kind of a good experience for a young planner to work in a small town because you get to do everything.
Yeah. What, when did you see the job opening for Atlanta?
When did I see it?
Did someone forward it to you? Did someone call you? Or did you, you know, were you on LinkedIn being like, when's this guy Tim gonna leave? Like, what's the, what was the...
No, one of my former employers from DeKalb County, or one of my former employees from DeKalb County, sent me a link to the job posting. And he said, Janay, you should do this. And I was deputy director of DeKalb.
Yeah.
And I had always wanted to be a big city planning director. And when I got the job in DeKalb, I thought, okay, well, you know, this is it, right? It's not a city, but it's an urban county.
Yeah.
And unincorporated DeKalb is just as big as the City of Atlanta in terms of population. It's around 500,000 people.
Yeah.
And so I thought, oh, okay, I'm not the director, I'm the deputy director. You know, and this is close enough and this is good.
Yeah.
And so when this former employee, this friend of mine, sent me this thing saying, you should, you should apply for this, I was like, well, you know, I think I've already done that, you know?
Yeah.
I was working at the law firm, at Parker Poe Law Firm. And I was like, you know, I don't know. And I thought, they're probably looking for somebody like Tim.
Yeah.
You know, like an architect and somebody very designy and, you know, and I'm, I'm a manager. I, you know, I get things done. I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm a city planner, but I'm very like, this is step one, this is step two, and budgets and spreadsheets and staffing plans, and here's how we're going to do this.
Yeah.
And I'm not very designy, right?
You guys have the same amount of hair, though. It's also true. So what prompted you then to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna apply?
Well, the recruiters called me.
Okay.
And at first, I was, I was a little surprised, you know, because like I said, I thought they'd be looking for somebody like Tim, like with an architecture degree. So I talked to them for a while. There were two guys from the recruiting company. And I said, okay, sure, you know what? I'll throw my hat in the ring.
Yeah.
And I did. And then I started talking to pretty much everybody I knew who had some familiarity with what was happening at City Hall,
Yeah.
who knew Mayor Dickens, who knew like what this administration wanted to do and accomplish, and the kind of person that they thought would be a good fit.
Yeah.
And all of those people described someone who kind of sounded like me.
Yeah.
What I heard was, we need help with the basic functions of the city. And the exact words I heard were, basic blocking and tackling.
Okay.
And somebody who can get things done. I said, well, okay, that's, that's me.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's good. And then I kind of started getting excited about it, like, oh, wow, okay. And I just kept asking people, do you, do you think that this would be a good fit? And I kept hearing, yes. I, yeah, Janay, oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And then I got a call from Lisa Gordon
Yeah.
to arrange an interview. Okay. I've known Lisa for a long time.
Yeah.
Sure. And she asked if I could interview that weekend. And I was going to Florida for a wedding and I couldn't do it, but there was some urgency. And I said, well, you know, I could do a Zoom interview or a phone call or, you know, whatever. And it ended up being a phone call in the car while I was coming back from the wedding
Yeah. Yeah.
With my boyfriend driving the car and me sitting in the passenger seat having the interview.
Nice, we've all done those Zoom calls.
Have you done a job interview that way?
No, no, yeah, well, it worked out.
Well, you know, we talked for about an hour and a half. And then when I hung up the phone, my boyfriend said, you said affordable housing too many times.
Yeah.
Hit him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is there, do you, did you worry at all that your background within, like, kind of given what, where the city was going, that the, did you find that you're, they were looking more at your public background? Your public experience or your private experience? Because you did, as you mentioned, you, you have moved from the public sector to the private sector, back to the public sector, but to the public sector, which to an outsider might seem like, wait a second, like, who, who is, whose interests does she care about most? Is it public sector, is it private sector? For you, is there, do you think both were important in their decision making? Or did they really lean on your public sector experience more? Or did they need someone who can communicate better with the private sector? What are your thoughts on that?
No, I, I don't really, no, I couldn't say. I think that, well, I don't know, there's a lot to be learned from both sides of the table. And when I was in the private sector, I was a consulting city planner.
Okay.
So one step away from being in the public sector. And I noticed when I was working in the public sector as a planner, that hey, the consultants get to do all the good stuff. You know, kind of like, huh, I want to be a consultant, right? Because they get to do all the fun projects.
Yeah.
And when you're a consultant, you're doing some fun projects, but the other reason to hire a consultant is because something is politically hot.
Yeah.
And you don't want your staff to handle it, you want a consultant to handle it.
Yeah.
And so I got some experience handling, you know, really difficult things as a consultant. And I got experience working, I think I figured it's eight, eight different states I've worked in as a consultant. So you get a lot of varied experience.
Yep.
A lot of different types of projects and a lot of different types of people that you deal with.
And did you find that anytime and while you were in the private sector, that, given that you understand the public lens, that, you know, development has not always been great to people and it's not always, and we'll get into that in a second, but the, have you, did you ever find where you had to defend a private interest that was not necessarily good for the public or was not what the public was asking for, yet because you worked a private sector job and you were a consultant to them, that you ultimately had to do maybe something that wasn't aligned with what you would have done on the, on the public side?
So when I was a planning consultant, the client was always the government. So with a couple of exceptions where it was a university.
Sometimes they can be the worst, right?
Well, not so much. I think really what you're talking about is maybe when I worked at the law firm and we had real estate developers as clients.
Sure.
I told my boss before I came to work there that there may be projects that I would decline to participate in if they made me feel uncomfortable.
Yeah. Did you ever decline to participate in any projects?
There was one client and, who came in and I sat in a meeting about their project and I told my boss, I can't work on this one.
Yeah, why?
I felt that that particular person did not have the, it was a county that he was working in and did not have that county's best interests at heart.
Got it. Do you feel like this is, this is the ultimate struggle of planning, like moving into your, your role now? From the outside, it's, it's, it often feels that the community interest or what people are saying they want and need from their city, particularly in terms of how land is used or how they are protected from being bulldozed out of their, their homes, that their interests often fall secondary to that of the private sector. And that's not just conjecture, that's also based on where public dollars are actually allocated. The fact that cities often go, cities or counties will, they'll have oopsie funds, which is what I like to call them, which is like, we're gonna do what we want and then whoops, sorry, that hurt you community, we're gonna now figure out how we figure that out. There is a feeling and a mistrust from the general public that planning departments are not for people, that they're for developers. How do you, in your role, because regardless of whether we believe that's true or not, that is a public sentiment. How do you fight up against that? What, what are you going to be doing differently in your role to build public trust in planning? Which has been broken for quite some time.
Well, I want to go back to that client of the law firm. When I said that, we eventually, we, we, they never engaged us. I think that they kind of felt for me that I didn't feel like I could work for them. And we, the law firm that I worked for, we, they didn't hire us.
Yep.
I'm a true believer in the planning process. We go through all of these efforts, comprehensive plans, they're my favorite. Because they're very forward looking, you know, they have a 20-year timeframe. And every city and county in Georgia is required to have a comprehensive plan.
Sure.
I love the public engagement for those because it's looking forward and it's city planning. And people tell us what they want for their neighborhoods and we put it in a plan. And we figure out how to get there.
Sure, that's procedurally how it's supposed to happen.
That's how it works and.
But do you think it's effective at doing that?
Well, you have to think about the nuts and bolts of the process. So then developers come in to see us. And we look at our comprehensive plan.
Sure.
Is what you're proposing consistent with our plan? Usually, when what they're proposing is inconsistent with the plan, we'll recommend denial of their application. Occasionally, somebody will bring to you an idea that hasn't yet been contemplated. So for example, I'm going to use Fayetteville as an example because I worked there and I'm intimately familiar with this particular project. Somebody brought an idea to the city that had never been contemplated in any of the planning processes. We want to build this particular type of business here. In this area that your comprehensive plan designates for residential and for agricultural uses. Now, this is in Fayette County, y'all. The city went completely against their plan. For the Pinewood Movie Studio. There are times when somebody brings an idea, something that makes you go, oh, my gosh. Why didn't we not think about this before? This is going to bring us a lot of jobs. This is going to help our community. Maybe we ought to relook at this.
Sure, I, I think that, I, I think that certainly, and we actually ran some, some numbers on like kind of the number of times where neighborhoods have said, we don't want a thing. And yet, it still ends up moving forward. Oftentimes, it's because neighborhoods don't get all the information that they need to be able to make decisions in a, in a way. So there is a true, if, if there's like, hey, we, we went forward because there was this thing that you just didn't know, but that communications channel between, if we're going to talk about process and procedure, the, the process of making sure that the very entities that are created by a city in order to advise or inform city level decision making, that they are equipped with the tools, procedures and information that they need to make good decisions. I think more often than not, if you talk to anybody who does neighborhood level work, and many of whom are here, they'll say, we don't always get that information, sometimes we don't even hear from the city. Sometimes we don't, they tell us one thing and then they do, they just do another. And while I understand that there's a CDP, I think that processes in general like that have often served benefit to a very specific community of folks, right? I think there are, and my question is, given that many planning process have, processes have been detrimental to historically black communities, and given that Atlanta is built off the backs of historically black communities, how do you change these processes, which are written and explicitly written? How do you make them better and more reflective of what communities are saying they want and need? Yet feel that we just defer to process sometimes, to say, yes, I'm so sorry, we had to build that thing. It's just process. And that seems to be the Atlanta way right now. So how do you, in future CDPs, in future planning processes? And I want to get back to also how we repair the damage that's been done. But in future planning processes, how do you make sure that equity is at the center of that? Meaning, the very communities that have been hurt by those processes are able to benefit from what plans and decisions are made moving forward, especially in a city like Atlanta. Fayetteville, I don't know their demographics or their history, but I know that that has been a challenge here in this city.
Well, that's just one of the best examples of why you deviate from your plan.
But there's, that's a procedural process, but how do you change the, I think there, and I, I had one of our team members just walk me through the actual process of, if the CDP, if you want to do something outside of the CDP, how do you do it? There, as long as you know somebody, you know somebody, you can go sit down, you got someone who can, who can walk you through those processes, that's there. What I'm saying is, well before that, when we create the CDP every five years, how do we make it so that the CDP actually takes that reality and circumstance into consideration? And for those probably folks with more who are watching versus who are in the room, the CDP is the Comprehensive Development Plan, the city has to do it about every three to five years to say like, here's how we're actually going to plan the city and what it's going to look like. That's required by the state for us to, to do that. But so often than not, it just seems like a tool that's used to hurt communities rather than help them.
You know, it's not intended to do that.
It never is intended per se, right?
The Georgia Planning Act.
Yeah.
It states that this is supposed to be a grassroots process.
But it's not, right?
Bottoms up, but it is.
So you believe today, the process by which the CDP is created has effectively engaged communities at a grassroots level to ensure that that CDP is informed?
So I cannot speak to what happened here before I got here.
Correct, that's why I was asking, what would it look like moving forward?
Like I said, I'm a true believer in the planning process. I believe this is the way that communities let their elected officials know what they want for their community going forward.
Sure, that's what it's supposed to do, yes.
A comprehensive development plan is about development. It is about the develop, growth, development and redevelopment.
Yes.
So when you go to a meeting or participate in a survey or in some other way in the comprehensive development planning process, you're letting your elected officials know what you want.
So what happens at that point in the process? So just focusing on that specific part, what we know is that, A, the vast majority of people do not have an avenue to participate in that process. B, that the avenue that has been created by the city of Atlanta per its charter is the Neighborhood Planning Unit system.
Yes, and I want, and I want you to stop right there because.
Sure.
I told you about my first interview for the job, I didn't tell you about my second interview.
Okay.
My second interview was with the mayor.
Okay.
And one of the questions he asked me was, well, how do you plan for a city that's, you know, so big? He's talking about the geographic area. And I said, well, you have to break it down into smaller chunks. And I said, and it seems to me we already have that structure set up, NPU system. We have a consultant that is doing our CDP for us and the work is starting now in the background, the research, right?
Who's the consultant?
Canvas Planning.
Okay, and have they worked in Atlanta before?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have been meeting with them regularly. And what I have said to them is, I would like to have a record-breaking public involvement process.
Okay.
I want more people involved in this planning process than you have ever had involved in anything you've ever done.
Okay.
And so what I said, now, you know, that's expensive. When you are a consultant, that's where you make your bucks, those meetings, right? Because you get all these people in the room and you put them in little breakout groups. How many consultant staff people are there to do that? Think about that, there's like 10 people from the consultant billing at what, $150 an hour? That's where you spend your budget, right? But what I said was, no, our staff is going to help with that. I'm smiling at some of the staff. We're going to help with that so we can have more meetings, so we can do more outreach. So we can talk to more people.
So two, two things on that. One is, I'd be interested in the measurements that are beyond quantitative because quantitative increases are, that's, that's a marketing opportunity. Get more people in a room, that's one thing. But I think it's about also making sure that the voices in the room are representative of Atlanta. And way too often, the very way that these meetings are structured, and maybe this consultancy group has it, has it down and I'm excited to see what that looks like. But way too often, the meetings themselves, the survey themselves utilize tools, processes and procedures that are designed for neighborhoods that are not, that don't look like Atlanta. Like, for example, community meetings and hearings are often held in places where, that may not be accessible for folks. It may also, you have the same five people who are showing up into, into one room. And they had now become coined, deemed the representative of the neighborhood, not knowing why is it that so many other people are not showing up? It's not because they don't care. Sometimes they don't even trust the process. So they're like, I don't even want to go to that thing because, when we try to get people to come to community-based work, they're like, why would I do that? Because I'm just going to say a bunch of stuff, I'm going to give so much public comment. They're going to be like, thank you, oh, my God, I love you, Miss So-and-so, thank you. And then they're going to put my picture on a little flyer and say, Miss So-and-so in the community said blah, blah, blah. And then the report's going to come out and they're just going to do the same thing they were going to do anyway. I'm not saying that's your intent. I'm not even saying that that is the process these folks are going to take. I'm saying that that is the history of the city in which you have accepted a position that is responsible for planning. So how do we, I'm trying to help build trust here. How do we get folks who feel this way? And I'm not going to lie, I often see that happen way too often myself. How do we get them to trust this process and make it more representative? Not more people in the room, but better representation of the wider Atlanta community and voices that are sometimes not at the table, but are certainly on the menu.
So one of the things I was concerned about when you asked me to come do this was that you were going to ask me for, what is my vision for Atlanta?
Why would that concern you, right?
My vision doesn't matter.
Okay, why?
I am only one resident of the city of Atlanta.
Okay.
I'm not here to impose my vision on anybody. I'm here to go out into the community and find out what the community wants so that we can get it for them.
But let me just respond to that, which is, the one difference between you as a community resident, which you are, and another community resident is not necessarily the fact that you both aren't residents, it's power. It's that you actually have power that one, two, five, 10, 100 residents do not necessarily have. And I think that with that power comes responsibility and you know that, that's why you took the gig. And yes, it is meant to be representative of what people are telling you. But what we have seen is that people have not had the power to actually influence decision-making in the city. So what I'm wondering is, if you're, or not, I'm not even going to say your vision. I'm going to say, if your process is to make sure as many voices and as many perspectives are included in a comprehensive development plan, how do we do that knowing that the current processes and procedures have not allowed for that in the past few comprehensive development plans? What would be the process, what's different? What, what is going to change that we can tangibly look for?
So I want to reach more people.
Okay.
In more places.
Okay.
In more different ways.
Okay.
When I've done this sort of planning effort in the past, I've reached out through a lot of different organizations. I find that schools and churches are very helpful.
Okay.
And I have had meetings at schools at the end of the school day. I've had meetings in churches on the Thursday before Easter. I have had meetings, I've taken meetings on the road to a lot of different places, you're mapping out all of the neighborhoods. And then you have to go different times. And it can't just be on Tuesday night at 7:00. It has to be a lot of different days, a lot of different times. It might be on the weekend.
Yeah.
It's through a lot of different avenues.
Yeah.
I think it's really important to work with our young people because comprehensive plan timeframe is 20 years. And what I like to do is reaching out through the government teachers and the high schools.
Yeah.
Because it fits with the curriculum. And get young people involved and get different organizations involved, particularly that work with young people to do this.
Okay.
I think that it's important that everyone has a voice.
Sure, I agree with that.
And I think that if everyone, if we can give as many people, get as many people involved as possible and hear from as many people, we'll have a plan that our elected officials can stand behind. Because ultimately, they are the decision makers on whether the plan is adopted.
Yeah.
And how it is implemented. So when a decision is made on a rezoning that is inconsistent with what's in the plan.
Yeah.
That's on the elected officials.
Got it. I have a couple more questions and we're going to open it up.
And people who participated in the plan need to hold their elected officials accountable.
Ah, great, you, perfect segue to my next question, which is about accountability. So what I will say is regardless of whether you came in, one of the parts of, of leadership, and you know this, is when you come into a position, you not only get to set what you want to do, you have to deal with everything that's happened before you, right? And now that's also your responsibility. And it's, it's, it, it often happens where people say, well, I'm not that guy, I'm not that, that gal. Like, don't, don't confuse me as that person. But what is true is that the damage that was done under previous administrations as it relates to planning, not just the mistrust, but the actual. not just the mistrust, but the actual bait and switch with communities at times, or community processes that are put in place that aren't really community processes. And I'm not even talking about this mayor, but I know we can all name a mayor who did not give a damn about public process. And it may be your favorite mayor, it may not. But we can all think about times in which the city has said, "We wanna do a thing." So for example, if the city says, "We wanna create a green space," right? And they put it in this beautiful book, like a design book, if you will. And it says, "We wanna create a green space for people. And we wanna get public input on this." So they go, they go to the meetings, public says, "Yes, I want a green space. Hell yeah. Yes, we want it centered in black communities. Hell yeah. Put it in the book, get the city council to pass it. Cut some ribbons, do some proclamations, clap some hands, right? This gets put into place." Then, the city comes in and says, "But what if instead of a green space, we use this for something else? A facility, if you will." And they say, "And even though, for 10, 20 years, we have said this would be a green space, we now believe, based on our understanding, this space should be used for something else." And they put it in council, which is the process, the procedure, we know that. And then the public gives, let's just say, 17 to 19 hours of comment, and says, "I don't want that, I don't want that, I don't want that." And then, the city does it anyway. And Ben says, "You know what, though? We're gonna create a task force to figure out how we can make sure that this doesn't create harm." And we say, "Well, cool. Will you stop any of the behaviors that are happening right now? No, 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 we still have to move forward." This is the type of stuff I'm talking about that creates distrust in community. And what I'm trying to figure out with you as our planning commissioner, because honestly, we love the planning department. Like, Leah LaRue is one of the most brilliant people in this city, one of the greatest assets that we have in this city. She's one of a few folks who sits, who has, before you got here, would sit in the middle of these conversations, where we would yell at her and be like, "You're not listening to the community." And then people would yell at her on the other side as well. Both sides, all sides. She actually did a leadership breakfast, too. The, and what ends up happening is that these comprehensive development plans, these books, these things that get created that are based on process, don't end up reflecting what people want and need. So what I'm trying to figure out with you tonight is that, I believe you, I genuinely believe you, that you are going to do...
I think you're wrong, though. I think that the plan does reflect what they want and need, but maybe the plan isn't followed.
And so, the question is, when the city does not follow process, procedure, or follow public input that they put out, that is reflective, again, I'm not talking about this mayor. This happened mayors ago. When they don't follow that, and then people lose their homes, their livelihood, their well-being because of it. What do we do to create repair? Not just say, "I'm so sorry, we're gonna get it better next time." But what do we do for all the people who are, who are, whose, for losses inevitable? And I'm very concerned, because when I say people, I'm just saying black communities in different words, 'cause it was, this is geographically cut, how these decisions are made. And so, I'm concerned that there isn't an accountability measure. So I would like to know, what could, what power does the Department of Planning have? Not only to plan for the future, but to repair harm from the past? And if it doesn't, have you seen any models that might allow for that, so that people can say, "This isn't just about moving forward, this is also about acknowledging what has happened?"
I think we have to acknowledge what has happened.
And then?
And then we have to move forward. We have to do the best we can to show the community that it's a different administration, it's a different staff, and that it's a different time, and different things are going to happen.
But what do you say to somebody who, even though it is a different administration, it's a different staff, it's a different time, that under a previous administration, decisions that were made are now affecting their ability to access basic needs and live in the homes they were promised they were allowed to stay in? What happens in those, how do we, is it, well, maybe there's a broader question that I can end with, which is, does the city have a responsibility of not just acknowledging harm, but actually actively putting resources toward repairing it?
So I'm a very neighborhood-based planner. And I like to go out into the community and hear from people about what they need.
Yeah.
And what their community should have, and the way it should be.
Yeah.
And I am totally open to hearing about past wrongs, and what went wrong, what happened, why did it happen, how did it happen?
Yeah.
So that we can make sure that it never happens again.
Yeah.
And we, we're doing this comprehensive plan, right? It's a plan for the whole city, and it's at 30,000 feet, right? And it's a long timeframe, so it's very general in nature.
Yeah.
Our next step after that will be going into neighborhood planning, taking a deep dive into various neighborhoods. And I think that in terms of neighborhood health, we have to look at each neighborhood separately. We do some of that now. For example, food systems planning, you know, so everybody can have fresh food close by.
Yeah.
We do a lot of stuff with walkability. But what we're not doing is looking at neighborhoods holistically.
Yeah.
And we need to bring all of those pieces together in a deep dive into a plan for each neighborhood in the city.
You believe the neighborhood planning unit system is the vehicle, or is it just one of many vehicles?
I think it can be.
What's the role of the NPUs in your mind?
So I've been on the job for five months now, and I'm not sure of exactly where all the boundaries are of the NPUs. Councilmember Overstreet asked us to look at the NPU boundaries to make sure that they still make sense. And there are some foundational principles for what the NPUs are supposed to be. You know, they're groupings of neighborhoods, and they're supposed to be similar neighborhoods. And so, in terms of planning.
Yeah.
You know, you want every neighborhood or group of neighborhoods to have a center. We're a large central city, we're a big city.
Yeah.
Everybody should be able to walk to get their basic needs. You should be able to walk to a store.
Yeah.
Or a restaurant, or the library, or church, or what have you. And not everybody has that.
Yeah.
And we have some difficult topography and natural features that separate neighborhoods. So we have to make sure that the groupings still make sense.
Yeah.
So that we can make those plans for the neighborhoods.
Got it, so your next step is to figure out what the boundaries should be? That's the priority before we can decide what role they play in planning?
Well, we have, you know, the foundational documents of the NPU system tell us that. You know, what the NPUs are supposed to do.
Yeah.
And, you know, got it, working on it.
Yeah.
Right now, we have to work on this comprehensive plan. The meetings will start, I think, in the fall, late fall.
Okay.
And the process will be a little over a year and a half, I wanna say.
Okay.
And once the comprehensive plan is adopted, then we have to start working on our neighborhood planning.
Yeah.
I think some efforts will start concurrent with the comp plan.
Okay.
The Little Five Points Business Administration asked me to send a letter of support for a plan they want to do right around that commercial center.
Got it.
And, you know, I said I would, so long as, you know, they would go along and work together with the comp plan process and make sure that efforts weren't being duplicated. Don't want anybody to waste money on this.
Sure, got it, cool, thank you. We're gonna open it up for questions. If you can just repeat your name. I may repeat the question, because I wanna make sure people at home can hear it, so pardon me if I interrupt to repeat it or reframe it. But just remember, questions with question marks, would love to get those in. And thank you again. Yes, go ahead.
When you were offered the job, were you aware that Atlanta was expecting influx of XX million? And would that happen, or did it affect your decision and/or your approach?
Could you say your name as well?
Mary Lee, Chair.
Okay, so Mary Lee just asked about you coming to, did you expect the influx of what, the millions of...
I forget how many millions.
Yeah.
That we were expecting over a 10-year period.
Yeah, just millions over a 10-year period. Was that something that you expected or not?
I do always kinda keep my eye on population projections, just because I personally find it interesting. Yes, I knew we were growing, and I was glad. I think it would be really difficult to be in my role in a city that was losing population.
Thank you. Yes? Could you give me your name again?
Michael Elliott.
Okay, thank you.
How to approach the NPU system. When it was first created, it had 13 staff members of City Planning Department assigned to it. When Andrew Young, the Mayor Jackson office, supported it, when Andrew Young came in, he didn't support it. He reduced that to one-half of the position. I don't have any idea of how many staff people are there now, but staffing and use and facilitating empowered them to engage the planning process is one way of activating that kind of voice. And I'm just curious which reactions.
So, Michael asked about the fact that the NPUs, when they were first created, had 13 staff members. Where are we now with the capacity to engage neighborhoods through the planning department in terms of staff?
Well, the NPUs were created in 1975, I think, and...
74.
74, okay, 74. And back then, there was a lot of federal money for planning, the 701 planning grants. Those don't exist anymore. And so, it's all city money, right? So we have about half that in staff for the NPUs. It would be great if we could have one planner per NPU. Like every place else, we are constrained by budget.
What do you specifically mean by that, that you're constrained by budget? Is it that staff salary, like you can't pay as high staff salaries are needed? Is it, you can't find the talent, or the talent is there, but you can't retain it? Like, what's the actual challenge that exists?
Yes.
Okay. Sweet, awesome, great. Is there any other challenge that you would say that exists that people should know about, as it relates to your ability to have the staff capacity to do comprehensive planning across neighborhoods? Like, why is it that we, is it purely just, is this something folks should advocate during the budget process? Like, "Hey, planning department should have allocated staff for this." Is that what should happen?
Yes, money, money, money.
Okay, got it, got it, okay. All right, well, that's as clear as we're gonna get there.
There's a question right behind you.
All right, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Mrs. Harris. I'd like to ask a question with the turnover that we've had with commissioners. Once you're in, I mean, you're doing this great job, and course, highlights on Atlanta. People will say, "We need her." What will stop you from going to them? Are you committed to so many years here? Or completion of a particular task or a job? What would keep you here if somebody says, "Oh, we need her back." And they do whatever it takes above and beyond what you're getting here? Where's your commitment? Would you be here for X amount of years, or...
Yeah, so Ms. Harris wants to know if you're gonna be our LeBron James? Are you gonna stay, you're gonna stay with us? Or do you have, if the bright opportunity comes, would you decline it no matter what, within a fixed period of time? Or do you have a commitment to the city on a contract, or...
Wow, I can't even imagine the job that would lure me away. I want to stay. My job is political. As a city planner, you learn early on that you can lose your job at any time when the political winds change. And going into this field, you just accept it, and it's just part of the job. But I want to stay, I love Atlanta, this is my home, and I'm happy to be here.
Cool.
Glad to be here.
Other questions, yes?
So Michael Halkey with Park Ride. I wanted to ask about Atlanta City Design, which you had referenced before. And I think that is something that kind of engages people into a conversation of thoughts and ideas. And I'm curious to find out, both in your interview process, whether or not Atlanta City Design was brought up as kind of an organizing structure, or in your five months, is this a plan of the past, or is it a plan of the present?
So Michael Halkey is asking about the city design plan. Was that brought up in your interview process? And how are you utilizing that in your role today, if at all?
I believe it was mentioned in my interview process. I mean, the city design is incorporated into the city's charter. Let that sink in. Nobody does that. Nobody incorporates planning documents into their city charter. This is our vision, right? Now, it's not like the comprehensive plan in that it's not parcel-specific. It's a vision. And it's aspirational, and it's what we work towards. Where the rubber meets the road is the comprehensive development plan.
Okay, yes?
Matthew Pearson. What recourse do you have if certain things are not brought to, say, an NPU land use? And if it is enacted, without going to be land use committee of NPU, it evolutes the hours of said project. Is there any recourse that you have in the city planning?
So is there, Matthew's asking if there's any recourse if things are not brought to the NPU land use process?
I'm not sure. I would probably need to check with the city attorney on that.
Okay, yes, Derek.
Hey, I'm Derek Green, NPU Chair. My question is regarding restoration of trust between communications from Department of Planning to the NPUs. And I'm surprised, of course, there's a putting of distrust at times, or trusting when the regulations are made, or adhering to regulations if they are presently written. Is there plans to restore that trust?
So one of the things that I would really like to do, and that I haven't got to do yet, is meet with APAB and start attending the NPU meetings. Before I accepted the job, and a lot of NPU meetings were online, I started going to all of them, 'cause I just kinda wanted to hear what was happening. I was sitting at my desk at the law firm, and I would be in an NPU meeting. I just wanted to know what was happening in each neighborhood, and, you know, just kinda what was, what everybody was thinking, and how they felt about the various projects and proposals in their areas. I feel like we could do better with communications. You know, I have said that we are limited with staff, and that is purely a budgetary issue. It's not, "We don't want to do this." Like every other employer around, it's hard to find staff members. And especially, it's especially hard to pay competitively. And the reason is, because our employees can go to work in the building and development industry, where they can make a lot more money. So we struggle to find qualified, to struggle, to find them and to keep qualified people. The people we have are very dedicated. Their heart is very much in their work, and that's why they're here. It's not because we're beating out everybody else on salaries and everything else. So I want you to know that our team, they give their very best and more to the community. I think for us to be able to do a better job, I think more staff would help. I think that if we could give more information, if we had more technical people, if we could consolidate that and get that to you quicker, it's a question of coordination between departments who are also short-staffed. So just know that all of our team that works together with the NPUs, they're not here because they're making bank. They're here because they love the city, that's why.
Other questions, yes?
I'd like to drill down a bit into the city design question then. Specifically, the vision of growth corridors and conservation areas, i.e. the neighborhoods. And, you know, couple that with the zoning rewrite that's already in progress. The, you know, one of the things we've observed in our neighborhood are 4A zoning. is new construction of three rental units on one single-family lot. A primary structure, an accessory dwelling unit, and now something called an accessory structure. And, um, um, it seems as though, perhaps in the name of affordable housing, that the conservation of single-family neighborhoods is, um, is being compromised. What are your comments about that?
Gee, how much time do we have? Our city needs more affordable housing. What we also need is honesty and transparency in our process and in our rules. Our four zoning is for single-family houses. So if you're going to build on a piece of property that is zoned R4, it needs to be a single-family residence. The R4 zoning district allows accessory dwelling units. That's a structure that's detached from the house, that can be up to seven hundred and fifty square feet in size. I think that there are a couple loopholes in the zoning ordinance that have certain builders trying to get around those rules. But I think the reason they're doing this, it's not because they're dishonest and they want to break the rules or set a very bad legal precedent. I think it's because we don't have enough places for small-scale apartment buildings, for triplexes and quadruplexes, and buildings with six, eight, ten, twelve units in them. And so this is something that we have to look at. We have to make sure that we have enough places for this type of housing that there's very clearly a demand for. At the same time, we've got to be honest. If it's zoned single-family, it's for single-family. So, right now, we are looking at revising our RG zoning district, which is an apartment zoning district, for small-scale apartments. I worked on it over Christmas. I was sitting by the tree waiting for Santa and was working on proposing some changes to that. Um, have run it by the city attorney, got other staff members looking at it right now. And I think this is something that we will bring forward in advance of the whole zoning ordinance because it is so clearly needed. At the same time, we have to close that loophole that several builders have been trying to exploit by putting triplexes in single-family zoned properties. So, we want to make sure that we have enough of the right types of zoning for the development that we need. And we got, we gotta get this straightened out. And it's been one of the main things I've been working on since I got here. And it's, we're pretty short-staffed. You don't expect the commissioner to be drafting zoning code, but I have been.
Time for a couple more. Yes, go ahead.
So you talked a lot, you talked a little bit about, um, participation and making sure that the next round of comprehensive planning includes as many residents as possible. Um, from that means, what I'm hearing is that there's obviously a lot of, um, input. So what in your, um, thought process does the output look like? Meaning, at what point does the community really understand that, yes, these are the ideas that we've had, and this is how we're actually seeing it show up in the implementation of the plan? So I think that's a lot of the disconnect that I know that we've been experiencing is that we give the ideas, like has been said previously, but because this is a twenty-year plan, and there's changes in administration, all those different things, the sentiment is that I literally just gave you, like, my intellectual property, but I'm not seeing what's actually showing up in my community. It would be great to have that, um, see that coming back to show where it actually landed in, in the neighborhood.
I like that. I, um, I'm driving our consultants crazy because I used to do what they do. And when they approach something in a way that's different than I would do it, I'm kind of giving them a hard time. What I would do upon receiving all sorts of community input is I would put it together in a document and put it out into the world for people to see. This is what we heard. I used to do a lot of comprehensive plans, and I had this sort of standard formula. Three steps. What do you want? Where do you want it? Did we get it right? Every meeting started with what we heard in the previous meeting. We would put together what we heard in documents and put it out there into the world, usually like a project website or something like that, hard copies if needed. This is what we heard. Did we get it right? And then you go to the, the very next, you go to the next meeting with what you heard. This is what we heard. Did we get it right? And then you get a little more fine-tuning. And as you go through the process, you just keep fine-tuning. The very last meeting is before you have a draft document to present to elected bodies as, did we get it right? So it's a constant loop of communication with the community. It's not a black hole that you're speaking into. It's a continuous communication. Now, it does take a little effort to be involved in these processes. It does. It, it's, it's a time suck, right? And you're giving of yourself time away from your work, or your family, or what have you. You're giving your time, you're giving your expertise. And we should be respectful of that, and we should be making sure that we understood you and that we got it right. So be looking for that. I know I'm gonna keep driving these consultants crazy.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Serena. Um, in that three-step process, um, the last part is, did we get it right? What are the repercussions if you don't get it right? Or do you keep getting it wrong?
Well, I gotta tell you, I mean, the plan has to reflect what the community wants.
And if it doesn't?
Well, it, here's the thing. It has to. Us as planners, we have to take your voice, put it into this document, and then figure out the steps, how to get you what you want. It has to be credible. And we have to be able to show our elected officials that, look, this is the voice of X number of people in the community. So you need to make your decisions, budget, land use decisions, capital improvements, based on this. So for it to be credible, it has to have a lot of people behind it. And to make sure that the elected officials implement the plan, people who participated in it have to hold them accountable. As a staff person, we can write a staff report that says, the plan says this, we recommend that you do that, but they don't have to listen to us.
So they just have to listen to you?
But they have to listen to you.
But doesn't sound like they do.
I'm a staff person.
We got some organizing to do. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Shirley Nichols, uh, Southland Gardens Community. Over the past few years, well, several years, we've had investors coming into neighborhoods and practically buying out certain neighborhoods. I don't know if that's your department, but I want to know what the cities take. I know you can't just stop people from buying property if they want to buy it. But when you have investors coming in, buying out almost whole neighborhoods, it makes it impossible for homeownership. So is that part of planning, or is the city looking into that? I see it as a problem.
It is most definitely a problem.
Yeah, sure. So, uh, Ms. Nichols asked, um, about the fact that there are large-scale investors that are coming into neighborhoods and buying mass parcels of property, uh, which prevent anybody from potentially being able to get homeownership or to be able to stay in their homes because large amounts of property are owned by very few investors. Is that a part of the planning department's process? Uh, and, or it's something that you deal with? And what are you doing to prevent it doing more damage than it's already done? Does that do your question service?
Yes, thank you. It's most definitely a problem, and it's a problem nationally. Somehow, single-family housing became an investment type. And there are whole funds that are part of some, you know, retirement funds that are just houses. So these big companies come along, and they buy up people's homes. And they're, you know, they're cash buyers, right? So when you're selling your house, you're gonna sell usually to the most qualified buyer, right? You know, the person, not to the person who you think financing might fall through, but to the person who's got cash. That's usually what happens. And it, those are oftentimes institutional investors. Those are these big companies, and they're buying up houses, and they package the mortgages as investment funds. This is a national problem. And I think this is something that the great minds in planning across the country need to work on. I think that as a city, we need to be part of those conversations. At the end of this month, I'm going to a conference, the American Planning Association Conference. And within the conference is the Big City Planning Directors Institute meeting. And wow, if you could see the email list for this, all the big cities. Somebody would probably pay a lot of money for that email list. But this is one of the topics that we're going to be discussing and that we're gonna be working on. And I intend to bring back every bit of knowledge and expertise that I can from this meeting. Um, I think this is something that our universities need to be helping us with and that we need to be looking at also as individuals when we sell our houses. Who is the buyer? Wouldn't you rather it go to a family instead of some company?
Okay. Any last questions before we wrap? Yes, we'll end there.
As you are, um, pushing back on your consultants, uh, I would ask you to consider something. AIPAB has requested your presence more than once. Um, we've also requested you to come and offer, uh, the CDP and sort of discuss that uh, with the consultants, um, so that you can sort of train the trainers to take it back to the NPUs themselves. Uh, and it is my understanding from its homes that that is not part of the contract. So would you be willing to ask them to deliver that to AIPAB?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Any last questions? Okay. Yes, yes, ma'am.
The amount of journalists have been talking much about the investors that are coming in, buying the home. They are not always in the United States. They're saying, one, they are putting them in certain, uh, LLCs. So they've been talking a lot about that.
It's true. It's a national problem.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for that comment. Um, can y'all join me in giving a round of applause to Commissioner Maytrin? So, uh, last things that I know, sorry, this room echoes a lot. So if you could just give me literally forty-five more seconds of your time. Uh, number, number one, um, number one, you are, uh, you are exactly who needs to be in the room. You need to be pressing on these conversations. We're gonna make sure that, um, you know, this list of folks, like who was here. If you have additional things you want to make sure we pass on to the department, please send it to us. We'll make sure we consolidate that. Some of y'all put questions in the form when you filled it out. We have all of that consolidated. Our Small and Mighty team will, will forward that along. But if there's anything that we can do to, to support on that, please let us know. Make sure you're talking to other folks in the room. Um, this, this is how organizing works. Uh, it, it involves a collective. Um, I was gonna ask you to name your favorite NPU, but I won't, uh, end on that. Uh, I knew it was gonna be NPU U, so, uh, uh, but I also, the last thing that I wanted to say is that your success, um, is in our best interest. And so I think that, one, I'm grateful that you took the time to have this conversation. You didn't have to do it. Um, second of all, I appreciate your raw and candid things on things that you knew the answer to and things that you're gonna find out, right? Um, and I think that, I hope you will take the genius and the allies in this room, uh, some folks who are actually developing, uh, their own efforts. Uh, we got folks who are on APAB, we got folks who are representing neighborhoods, previously represented neighborhoods. Um, I hope you'll see these folks as allies in what is a joint goal of making sure our comprehensive development process reflects people's, uh, needs. So, uh, it looks like we're gonna have cards passed around so you can have, uh, the commissioner's contact information, but thank you. Last thing with, what's your theme song for the year? What are you listening to right now? Uh, what, uh, what, what song can we add to our playlist for next time?
Oh, gosh, I, I, I don't know.
All right, she's listening to planning podcasts. That's what I've heard, uh, which is probably it. Thanks, y'all, for being here. Thanks for your support and your energy. We will be hosting these more frequently, and, uh, we'll, and that, we'll put you on a mailing list so that you can know when the next one is. Uh, thanks for getting in good trouble. Appreciate it.